Welcome to Empower You, everyone. I am Dan Reginald. Educate, Enjoy, Engage. That is the goal of these free Empower You sessions that, gosh, we've been doing for 11 years now. The goal is to do one thing, and that's help to help get you more empowered in your lives. Tonight, we want to talk about really important topics like how to run for school board, how to take back your school board. So I've got some big news for you tonight. Grab my Kleenex here from our friend Lisa Woods. And it is a message telling us that earlier today, State Board of Education Superintendent Paulo Di Maria submitted the following message to the State Board of Education, notifying them that he will be retiring in September. What a tragedy. That may, in fact, be the truest form of equity. I don't know, but that's big news. And hopefully, one of our guests later on, Brendan Shea, can tell us a little bit about more about that. So I wanted to just tell you a few things tonight. And first thing, I wanted to tell you that I hope you're all enjoying your summer off from class. Sorry about this necessary summer school at Empower You, but there doesn't really seem to be a more important topic than what we need to do to balance the composition on our local school boards. I wanted to send a shout out to the team out there, the team that helps make Empower You possible. We're not in the studio tonight, but these are the people that help. Betty Overstreet, our great executive director, Jill Google, our operations manager, Bill Roll, our treasurer, our producer on the board tonight, Jake Grunkie. Also, our important board members, Joe Platt, Ken Bowman, Karen Cartier, Bill Monier, Nita Thomas, and Barb Horowitz. When we open the fall semester, which will be September the 27th, we're going to have a new look. Empower You Ohio will become empoweryouamerica.org. Same concept, educate, enjoy, engage, same classes. Hey, we're just starting to work on our semester. We just can't wait to learn with you. So one of the things about Empower You, it's kind of a group of people that really we all try to come up with good ideas about classes. But we'd love for you, if you have an idea for a good class for us to have during our 22nd semester, jot us a note, send us some information to info@empoweryou.org. So we are a free university, and free means we need to pass the hat. So help us, if you can, with our expenses for production, advertising, staffing. The easiest way to do that is to donate a couple dollars when you're signing up for classes. Those of you who are new tonight, there's really a lot of people signed up. We're really glad to have you. And we hope you'll join us in the fall semester, but you can also donate at empoweryouOhio.org in the top right corner. Many of you did tonight, and we just really appreciate it. So tonight's required reading, we always have a required reading for those people that are new, it's really a good article. And it talks about, it's the Wall Street Journal editorial from yesterday, entitled "The New Racial Discrimination." And what this article talks about is what you get with Joe Biden's equity plan. And maybe I should include Governor Mike DeWine's equity plan in that. The governor just doesn't ever seem to be able to make up his mind on whether he wants equity or equality. And for those of us who have studied what that means, I think most of us are clear on that. I'm hoping to hear some better stance on where the governor's at, like soon. Link to this important article, you should check it out on empoweryouOhio.org. So tonight is, we also do, for those of you who are new, we always do a giveaway. And Betty said, Betty, our executive director, said, hey, look, you know, if you're going to bring them out for the summer, for summer school, you got to make it worth their time. So with almost every word I hear on the news these days about Marxism and what it is being tagged on almost every governmental initiative, I thought, what better giveaway tonight than the chance to win Mark Levin's new book, which is his 10th book called American Marxism, which is coming out, I believe, in about a week and a half, July 13th. So we're going to give away a copy tonight if you want your chance to win. Also, we've got a second giveaway, a product from the company that I run, Frame USA. This is just in time for July 4th. It's one of our frameusa.com's new painted flag frames. It's spectacular. So we make 100% American-made frames here at frameusa.com, and there's your chance to win one. And finally, the third giveaway, we never forget about the fact that Empower You is a Pepsi-only free studios. So if you want a chance to win a 12-pack of Pepsi, all you got to do to be entered to win all three is just go down to the bottom of the screen where it says Q and A, and just enter your email address. It's as simple as that. We'll try to remember. I'll try to remember. Jay, the producer, if you'd try to remind me at the end of the session, we'll let you know who won those three giveaways. So the Mark Levin book, the Frame, and the Pepsi, three different giveaways, just email address down at the bottom. So I've had many people tell me, write me and say, oh, we're having a school board meeting tonight or whatever. Is this class going to be taped? The class is going to be taped. You will be able to re-watch it tomorrow. All you do is wait until four o'clock, go to empoweryouOhio.org, click on the link, you can watch it, you can share it with your friends. There's going to be a lot of good information. So just real quick, before we start, I wanted to bring you up to date on what's happened since we had our class on Critical Race Theory on May 11th. That class was our largest class ever. It was really something else. Many people contributed to it. Since then, Empower You has helped form StopCriticalRaceTheory.com, which is a coalition of 29 different Ohio groups that grew out of that May 11th class. We urge you to go to this website and take the pledge so that we can let you know what's going on in our statewide initiative. And our goal in this initiative is simple. We want to end critical race theory in Ohio's schools, universities, and governments. We've had close to 1,800 Ohioans join the initiative. We've met with legislators, the lieutenant governor, and several other thought leaders around Ohio about critical race theory. And we've helped sponsor protests, provided resources, and provided testimony on House Bill 327, which would end critical race theory. We had almost 45 people testify about it. The bill ran out of time in the legislature, meaning the legislature gets this pretty good deal. They get to take 60 days off on June 30th. But we are expecting that this bill will be considered in September, and hopefully it will pass. The biggest detriment to a bill on ending critical race theory is right here, Governor Mike DeWine. He has been clear in the news about his support for equity. Now, one of his aides has told us that there's this, you know, there may be a little bit of a definition problem between his understanding of the words equity and equality. And the one thing you could do to help the governor look at this critical race theory legislation, which you'll have to sign, is to send him a note. I encourage you to do that. So it was out of this coalition of 29 groups that, a few weeks ago, I had a chance to meet Tom Hock from Free Ohio Now. He talked to me about the importance of recruiting new people to run for school board, and out of that meeting comes tonight's class. Before we start, I just wanted to let you all know that we have a gentleman tonight, reporter Daniel Payne, who's joining us tonight from Politico. Daniel's interested in talking to parents in the next few days, if possible, especially if they're considering a run for office like school board. He wants to know why. He kind of wants to figure out what's going on as we really try to add some dynamic change to the composition of school boards. If you would like to tell Daniel your story, you can feel free to contact him. I'm going to trust that Daniel will prevent an objective analysis in his reporting. We ask that he does that. But Daniel, welcome to Empower You, and his email address, if you miss it, is also on our website, empoweryouOhio.com. So about tonight's class. Tom Hock is the executive director of Free Ohio Now, which is a statewide liberty group fighting the new normal. Free Ohio Now has brought Ohioans together throughout the state to push back against growing government and big business tyranny through peaceful protests, rallies, and legislation action. Prior to founding Free Ohio Now, Tom worked as an IT program manager for many years. He's also retired from the Navy Reserve after a 21-year career, during which he served in Iraq from 2006 to 2007. In addition to several volunteer positions, Tom is in his third term as a member of the Board of Education for Riverside Local School District. So you've got a school board member who's going to be teaching you tonight, which is in Lake County, Ohio. He has a BS in chemistry from Miami University and an MBA from Case Western Reserve University. He lives in the Cleveland area, and he enjoys a good cigar once or twice a week. As we're going through this, I'm going to ask you, if you have a question, to go to the Q and A section at the bottom. And Tom, we didn't talk about it, but if there's questions that we need to kind of, that are related to what you're talking about, I may break in with you and ask you those as we go. So Tom Hock, welcome to Empower You. We're really glad to have you tonight.
Well, Dan, thank you very much. I really appreciate the invitation, and I'm hoping that tonight's class is going to be informative. And I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. And there we are. Okay. And let me do one more thing, and then we'll get going. All right. So as Dan mentioned, I have done a number of things, but what's most pertinent tonight is that I am a school board member for the Riverside Local School District in Lake County, Ohio. I'm in my third term, so I'm in my 10th year of actual service. And so I hope tonight to relay some information and experience that I've had in running for school board. And really want to encourage people throughout the state that now is the time to get involved and to run for office, in particular for school board, because of the importance that the school board member has on the future of our citizenry, how we teach kids, and what those kids do once they actually graduate from school and enter into our society. So right now, I think most of you can feel that there's an American resurgency that is brewing throughout America, in particular in Ohio. I think Free Ohio Now is part of that movement, and we got in our start back in March of 2020 with regard to the lockdown and many other things that happened from a government perspective that really trampled on our rights. And so now the American resurgency is coming up where people are understanding that they need to get involved with their government, and in particular with our schools, to ensure we have a balanced and factual-based curriculum and that we're not using divisive concepts when teaching in the classroom. And out of this American resurgency, we need to have leaders. And those leaders we need today are, among others, we need people to run for school board, as I mentioned. And it is truly through the schools that we're going to have a lasting impact on what Ohio looks like down the road. This training is designed to equip the school board candidates with information so that you can run an effective campaign and win. But even regardless, this information, I think, is going to be useful, whether you win this year or in two years. As I will be mentioning later, there's a regular frequency of school board seats that are up. And so trying once is great, but being persistent is going to be important as well. And really, what I'm trying to do today is demystify some things, the ins and outs of running for school board, and how an average person who maybe doesn't have background in how things work, how you are going to be able to actually run an effective campaign and win. So let's talk a little bit about some information regarding school boards. Many of you are aware that we have many, many school districts in Ohio. In fact, we have over 600. And the typical school district has five board members. The Board of Education is a nonpartisan elected office. It is the furthest down ticket office that is out there. So it is, on the pecking order of things, the Board of Education is the first step on the elected office ladder, if you will. As I mentioned, it's nonpartisan. And what does that mean? That means that there's no party affiliation that is next to your name on the ballot. So the names are just listed. Everybody who's running, and there's no party affiliation that's there. It's kind of like running for judge as well, where there's no party affiliation. They're staggered four-year terms, and they're during the odd year. So every odd year, a portion of each school board is up. So in 2021, which is what we're talking about tonight, each district will have at least two, and many will have three seats up for election. In my district, we actually have three seats that are up for election this November. From an overview perspective, the Board of Education is responsible for the academic and financial performance of the district. And obviously, we are accountable to the voters. You may not know this, but a school board is only responsible for directly hiring two positions, the superintendent and the treasurer. The superintendent is responsible for basically most of the day-to-day operations, whether they be academic, food service, transportation, sports, et cetera. So the superintendent runs, basically runs the school. The treasurer is responsible for the financial operation of the district. So those are the two employees that are directly hired by the members of the school board. The rest of the people that work for the district, also, the board does approve them, but they do that in a kind of one-step-removed process. So the Board of Election approves all unique contracts and all hires. And what I mean by all hires, that includes the administrators, the teachers, building staff, coaching staff, transportation staff, et cetera, everything. But it's at the recommendation of the superintendent. But it's important to note that even though the superintendent can recommend a hire, the board does not necessarily have to agree with that hire. So what does that really mean from a board perspective? If there's an administrator position that is open, and people have been brought in to interview and to be a part of the process to potentially fill that position, the school board is not involved with the interviews for that position. That's done by the superintendent and other people, another team, interview team that the superintendent may put together. But ultimately, the school board has the right to ask questions, to inquire what's going on with filling the position. And the school board needs to be very comfortable with that potential hire above and beyond the recommendation of the superintendent. All school board meetings fall under the Sunshine Laws of Ohio. Not everybody's familiar with Sunshine Laws, but they're equivalent to the Freedom of Information Act laws that are at the federal level. So they rule on, they govern how a school board meeting needs to be conducted, the fact that it needs to be public, the fact that it needs to be announced, and that there needs to be, for example, on the agenda, public participation. In addition, within the Sunshine Laws, there are, in essence, performance requirements for the school district on responding to public information requests. And indeed, Boards of Education and districts fall under that and need to respond to the citizenry when they have questions. During the, every January, there's an organizational meeting, and at that meeting, the Board of Education, or excuse me, the Board of Education elects a president and a vice president. The president basically, you know, is in charge of running the meetings and serves as a focal point for the board, but the president has one vote like every other member of the school board. So the president is not more influential from a voting perspective. Simple majority, all school boards and basically all boards have an odd number. The reason for that is to make sure that there's a chance for a majority and not a tie vote. So following Robert's Rules of Order, if you vote I, that's a yes, and nays and no. But you need three I's in order for a resolution to be approved. So hopefully, that gives you a little bit of background, maybe some information you didn't have about how the school boards operate and how many they are and things like that. All right. So getting into the nitty-gritty, how do you file? How do you actually make your campaign official? So what you need to do as a candidate is you need to file a candidate petition, which is obtained at your Board of Elections. That petition has a lot of verbiage at the top. It talks about which office you're running for. You have to swear that you have, because it is a true petition, you ultimately, when you submit it to the Board of Elections, you have to sign an affidavit that swears that you witnessed all of the people who signed. Sign that petition so that truly you were involved in all steps of the process. You need 25 qualified electors, which means registered voters in the school district in which you are running. The petition needs to be submitted to the Board of Elections by August 4th at 4:00 PM for the November 2nd election. So we're sitting here on July 1st, so we have a little bit over a month. It can be a little daunting, if you've never done it before, to go door to door and ask for signatures for your petition. But remember, when you engage with the local voters and you are getting signatures on your petition, let them know that just because you're signing the petition doesn't mean that they are necessarily supporting you. It's literally giving you the right to run, and everybody should be in favor of getting as many people on the ballot as possible. There's a filing fee of $30, which is minimal. And as I'll talk about a little bit later, there are financial reporting requirements, but the $30 is not subject to that. Basically, at the same time, it will behoove you to fill out the designation of treasurer form, and that's also submitted to the Board of Elections. And you can get a lot more information via the Ohio Campaign Finance Handbook, Chapter 2. And from that, I mean, I just quoted from Chapter 2 of that handbook. "Before receiving any contribution or making any expenditure, a potential candidate must file a designation of treasurer form 30-D. This is considered a registration form and includes basic information such as the candidate's name and address, the candidate's committee name, the office sought, and the name of the treasurer, and any deputy treasurers. The candidate must either designate himself or another person as the campaign committee treasurer." So I suspect everybody who's on this call has received multiple pieces of, you know, political literature. And if you look closely, you'll see somewhere that it was either paid for by a committee, if it was from a candidate, or that it was paid for by a PAC. That's what this form represents. I think the last time I ran, my committee was called Friends of Tom Hack. You don't need to be very creative with the name, but you have to have that on there so that the person receiving the literature understands where the literature came from. So that's very important. So when you get government involved with anything, it becomes complicated. So many of you are probably aware that there's quite a campaign finance reporting requirement that's in place, and it can be arduous. However, there is what they call the local candidate waiver. And the local candidate waiver applies only to really down-ticket campaigns, such as school board, running for city council, township trustee, and the like. But basically, by applying for the local candidate waiver, the treasurer of the committee agrees not to accept more than $2,000 in total contributions, and to not have more than $100 from any individual contribution to the campaign, and that the committee will not make expenditures for more than $2,000. So I can tell you, and everybody's situation is going to be a little bit different, but I've run three times, and I have spent less than $2,000 each time. And again, I've had competitive races, but frankly, this time around, every election environment is different. There may be more people who need to spend more money, but this local candidate waiver is important to know about. And as you look at the last point on the slide, you can basically submit and say, hey, I don't intend to, I intend to fall below the thresholds you described for the local candidate waiver. But then, as things change within the campaign, if you end up going over these thresholds, the only thing that happens is then you just, you need to start reporting more regularly on your campaign finance. That's all there is. There is no penalty for saying, hey, I want to be, I want to apply for the local candidate waiver. And then if you go over, there's no issue whatsoever if that happens. So that just is something I think people need to be aware of. I suspect that most people who run for school board are going to be appreciative of the local candidate waiver. But again, we are in a different electoral environment, and we need to see what's going on, what the competition is doing, and how we best can win. All right. So the next thing that you need to do is you really need to start thinking about how you want to present yourself. Really, what is your biography? And so I think that you, I would recommend, how about that, that you sit down and you write your bio upfront. And that way, you have all the information you need so that when you have different campaign strategies or messaging strategies, you have all the information you need. You can pick and choose what you want and tailor it for each of the campaign strategies. So what's a typical biography? You know, you certainly want to talk about your family circumstances, your commitment and time living in the community, your children, especially if they may have attended in the school district, other things that you have done to show that you are a part of the community. It's very important to let the voter know what your background is. You also want to talk about your work and leadership experience, your educational background, other life experiences, you know, say, your military service. If you go on missions for a church or something similar, you want to talk about your volunteer activities. That's all very important. Examples could be your coaching or service to a religious institution, scouting, things along those lines. And there are many, you know, there are just dozens and dozens of organizations that are out there that people volunteer for. You'd also want to highlight any school-related activities. Maybe you're part of a booster club for a sport. You may have been on PTA. You may have done other things that are important to bring in. And then you also, believe it or not, I recommend bringing out your hobbies, what sports you're interested in, other interests that you have. The reason for that is it makes you a real person. It allows the voter to more easily relate to you and have confidence that you are someone who they can trust to elect to a position where you are one of five members of the local school board. As you're looking at this, and you might be saying, well, gosh, I have something to say in some areas, but not other areas. Just take this as a rule of thumb. Don't worry if you don't have something to go into every category. Most of you online are going to recognize that you have experience and background that you'd want the voter to know that I haven't even mentioned. So you have to be consistent and authentic to yourself and your background. But again, this is just a rule of thumb to make sure that you think about this upfront, because I do believe that's really important to kind of have in perspective those things you want to convey about your personal circumstances to the voter. All right. So the next thing I recommend you do is answer the question, why are you running for school board? And in fact, I do believe that's the most important question you need to answer. You know, not all voters pay attention to what's going on in the school district with education. So my personal perspective is that you should stay away from buzzwords and use very clear items or clear words that in terms that people would generally understand. You know, colorblind education, balanced approach, high standards, partnership with parents, stretch taxpayer dollars, things along those lines, concepts that people can understand regardless of the political circumstances that are engulfing the country, just pretty straightforward. And then I also strongly recommend that you have an elevator speech. And in case you haven't heard that term before, the elevator speech really is, say you're And in case you haven't heard that term before, the the elevator speech really is, say you're you get onto an elevator and you have a thirty second ride. And you happen to be in the elevator with another person and that person says, well, gosh, what do you do? The elevator speech is describing what you do in a nutshell within thirty seconds or so. So here's something I just put together that gives you a sense of what an elevator speech might be. How how it might be written and and presented. So what it is, is I'm running for school board to ensure our schools graduate. Upstanding citizens with American values, to be a voice for parents concerned about what is being taught in the classroom. And to represent the taxpayers by spending tax dollars wisely. So so in a nutshell. I guess a a potential voter gets a sense of where you are, where you stand. There are no details in this. But you've presented a number of areas. And and then if the voter is interested, they can ask more detailed questions about any of the specific areas. What what do you really mean by American values or how do you plan to spend tax money more wisely? You need to have answers for those questions, but you need to to upfront be able to communicate really in a nutshell. What's your why you're running? Because that that truly that truly is the most important question and the question you will get most often. The other thing I would mention is that in most districts. At least, you know, two thirds to probably three quarters of the households have no direct. Contact with your school district on a regular basis. They just they don't, they they currently don't have children in in school, they're too young, they've already graduated. You don't have kids yet, what have you. So so many people think that when they run for school board, well, you just you got to focus on parents. You got to focus on maybe the, you know, the employees of the school district. And and you can, you you need to incorporate them in your messaging. But but really, there there are far more people who do not have a regular exposure to the schools that are in the voting public. Than people who have a direct, you know, a a direct contact with the district on a regular basis. So keep that in mind and you can really balance how you present yourself and really put yourself in the shoes. Of of the majority of the households in your district, because they don't have a regular connection to the schools. And you can bring out important aspects about the district that maybe somebody who is running strictly. You know, trying to engage with parents, you can bring a more holistic understanding of what's going on in the district. And how you might address problems in a different way than somebody who has a school only focus. So I I do believe you, you know, answering the question, why you want to run for school board is really important. And keeping in mind, the the different voting groups is really important as well. So next up, we have, you know, voter identification strategies. And it is, it's really important, and this is, you know, as I have in here, right there is, you know, it's a statement of the obvious, right? You want to maximize your effectiveness and to do that, you need to identify the voters who are most likely to vote for you. So many boards of election have information about the voter that is available. Online, and I'm very fortunate in in my case, I had the board of election here in Lake County. Has a lot of information online. You can you can actually put in different criteria by precinct. By party. You can do it by city. There are many different ways of trying to get information. Uh on the voter based on the political subdivisions that that are there, including uh school board. So so that's a i- is definitely a plethora of information. And I'll talk a little bit later in this slide about how you can use that information to develop strategies for reaching out to voters. But the typical voter record that you get includes the name, the address, the birth date, the precinct, party, if there's any. Voting frequency and and things like that. That's probably the most key information that you need and will allow you to. In essence, identify those voters that that are most likely to be responsive to your message. So not unfortunately, not every board of election is as. Has information as available as the Lake County Board of Election. So if your board of election has a website, but there's no way to do things online. You still, the voter information is public information. And and so you can make a formal request to get the information from the board of election. And make sure you get it in in soft copy format, you know, Excel format or or C S V. Which is stands for comma separated values. You want it to be in a manipulated manipulable format. So that you can sort it based on what particular criteria you want. You don't want a a printout. You know, the printout is better than nothing, but but it is not nearly as useful as having that information electronically. So definitely, if your board of election just does not have that information. You you need to take that step and and engage with your board of election and get that information on the voters. Because that is truly the best way to to maximize your effectiveness. So who are your likely voters, what are the potential profiles? So what I have on the rest of the slide really represents those, you know, basically my strategy when I ran the last time. So my 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 first tier voters, you know, I'm looking for, I was looking for regular voters. What I mean by regular voters, they vote in all elections. They vote in off year, local and state elections, as well as presidential and national elections. They, if there's an election, these folks are voting. I I do come from a, I thought my message would probably resonate more with Republicans and independents. So I I did look for that affiliation as well. My second tier voters were people who I designated as frequent voters. Maybe they vote in presidential and national elections and occasionally in local and state elections. And again, I I thought that my my message would resonate more with with people who were Republican or independent. And then the the third tier of of the voters. Were people I would classify as sometimes voters, they're the the people that come out once every four years and vote in presidential elections. And again, I in in trying to maximize my effectiveness. With limited time and and resources, I did focus on, you know, Republicans and independents. But I also would categorize that regular voters and sometimes voters who have a Democrat affiliation. Are also in the in the third tier and you don't want to necessarily write those folks off. Because what happens often at the local level is that people really have a chance to get to know you more. Than if you're running for Congress or even county commissioner or what have you, it's just there. It's too broad a geographic area that that office represents, so they don't really have a chance to meet people. But you know, township trustee, school board, city council, things like that. People might be more likely to base, to vote based on their relationship with you and who you are. Then then necessarily strictly on party affiliation. And again, I want to make clear, even though I I have brought party into this and I did use party as part of my strategy. In twenty nineteen, when I was last elected. School board is nonpartisan, so so your name will be on the ballot, but your party affiliation, if you have one, is not going to be there. Again, this is just a strategy on how to take the information on voters and how to parse it down in usable strategies. So again, that you maximize your 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 limited time and effort as well as money. All right, so once you've done that, I I think you're you're basically ready to to start talking about. Your your, how to get your message out, how to get your campaign message out and your distribution. There are many strategies that that a person can use, a candidate can use. One of the strategies that that I I haven't personally used in running for school board, but I used it in in several other campaigns. Regarding levies is to to take advantage of. You know, a community event that you have on a regular basis. So maybe over the summer, you have a a summer concert series or a picnic or parade. You want to go ahead and and attend those things. It's it it what's good about them is they're predictable because they're obviously already scheduled. People come to you. And you can tailor your literature such that it's is easy for for people to to digest what you're saying. And you cover your your points. And I make a point, you, you know, I have used literature to this point, but I'm going to try and use the the term lit. That is in in political circuit circles, you really don't talk about literature, you talk about lit, you're doing a lit drop. What is your lit work like, look like, what do you want to include in your lit? So I'm going to use that. So if you hear the the term lit, that is just a shorthand for literature. Another strategy of getting the message out is is door to door. And and typically, there there are two types of door to door. There's there's knocking on specific targeted doors. With the goal of actually engaging with the voter. You want to introduce yourself, you want to answer questions, you want to leave your lit behind. But you really, you're you're really looking to engage with the voter and have a conversation. The other type of door to door is literally a lit drop. And and what you're doing is you you definitely want to go with targeted houses because. Again, you want to maximize your your time, effort and money. So you have targeted houses and you are either dropping the lit at the. At the in the person's newspaper tube or you are actually going to the 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 house. And you're putting the the literature, you know, on or near their door. Tubing, if you haven't heard of it, is is a is not as effective as it has been in the past. Tubing is really literally where you take your literature and you place it into the the newspaper tube. You cannot place your unmailed literature into a mailbox. The the postal service owns the mailboxes. And so the only thing that can go in there is is things that have been stamped and and delivered by by the postal service. But if you are in an area and there are a lot of newspaper boxes around, you're you're more than welcome to put that information, your literature. Your lit into those into those newspaper tubes, hence the name tubing. So that's something I will talk about in in other classes, which I'll I'll talk about. Towards the end of of this session. Yard signs, many campaigns choose to use yard signs, but I don't regard them as a requirement. I would say as a rule of thumb, you you don't want to put out, you know, four or five, you probably want to at least put out twenty five to thirty signs. And 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 keep in mind, I I've never actually used yard signs in my campaigns. And just remember that that yard signs don't vote. I was involved in a campaign at one point in in the side that I was working for. Gosh, we had more signs than the opposition and we lost. So yard signs can be helpful, but they're not indicative and 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 again, the bottom line is yard signs don't vote. So don't, don't think you have to have yard signs, but but it, you know, it is, it it can be a useful campaign strategy. Just don't think of it as a necessity. And then because you've already, you know, sat down, this last point on the slide is tailor the size of your lit. You know, you've already gone through your bio, you've answered the question why you want to run for for school board. You then have the ability to to tailor the size of your lit. So if you're going door to door, it may make sense to to have a full sheet of paper and half by eleven flyer. And you 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 roll it up and you you put it either in the in the tube, the newspaper tube, or you take it to somebody's house. But if you, you know, that event I'm talking about, the hypothetical events where the community has a parade or a regular series of events. Such as a concert series, you you may want to have a smaller piece of paper that people can put in their pocket or their purse. And and again, it highlights the the key points you want to make, but it's not going to cover everything that you might want to communicate to them. So this, with doing all these things, you will be able to to tailor your message. And make sure that the most important information that you wanted to convey is really at your fingertips. And then you can tailor all this information depending on the circumstances where you're campaigning.
Hey, Tom, can I can I ask a cou- a couple of questions real quick?
Sure.
So you had the three tiers on the slide before where you identified that. Now, like if you're going to do a door to door campaign. Would you, would you recommend doing that on all three tiers or just a subset? Or do you do you have any thoughts on that?
Sure, I, you know, you're always battling time, right? And and school board is a is a part time job, which I didn't mention upfront. It's not like you are, it is, it is literally a part time job. And and so you you're you're, many people who are running for school board are going to be working. They're going to have other responsibilities, so it's it's always a question of of time crunch. So you have to gauge it for yourself. I I did do some work in the third tier. But mostly when I went door to door, I did focus on tier one and tier two. Because I thought that was the, you know, the most bang for the buck.
Makes sense. So Ryan asks, too good question. Does the na- does the committee that you form need to be a legal entity?
No, so you can, you can, basically, you get to name it yourself and but there's no, there's no, you don't need to run it past a lawyer or anything else. Obviously, you use obscene language or anything. But but you know, I I I'm pretty sure that my last campaign was Friends of of Tom Hack. And and so, you know, it needs to be something, something along those lines, just so that people understand where. Where the literature is coming from, but you don't need to, you know, you don't need to copyright it or go see a lawyer.
And here's a second kind of similar question. Is it, is it ideal to keep the campaign name as neutral as possible in your opinion? Or is it potentially a good idea that the committee name to reflect the candidate's platform, like Back to Basics Committee?
Yeah, so I, you know, back to basics, that something like that, you know, that that would sound good to me. I I I again, I I let me go back a a slide or two. You know, people, people don't always pay attention. I mean, we know that, there are people, and I'm sure in everybody's life who's on this call. Who who just aren't, you know, you know, people who are not plugged in, right? So so my suggestion is you you use easy to use turns and stay away from buzzwords. So I I wouldn't necessarily, you know, for example, say that you want to, you know, call your campaign, you know, committee, you know. Eliminate C R T committee or something like that. I you need to meet the voter where they're at. Many voters are going to agree with you, but they may not be able to articulate. So so anyway, that's that's probably more of an answer than than it was needed, but I hopefully that that is sufficient.
Catherine had kind of a basic, I think, question that she needs to decide before she can decide whether to do this or not. How much time is really dedicated to being on a school board? I work full time and can't have it take too much of my time. What would be a good approximation, do you think?
Sure, I can talk about my experience. My experience may be different than other school boards because we have committees. But at a minimum, you know, you plan on on two meetings a a month. You have a regular school board meeting. And then we have four committees in my school board. Billings and grounds, curriculum, personnel and. And something I'm forgetting off the top of my head, but but each each board member is is on two committees. And we try to have committee, we try to put the same people on 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 like committees. So that we can have committee meetings back to back. So at a minimum, you have basically two meetings a month. Sometimes things arise where you have to meet more frequently than that. If you typically, at least in my experience, if you have to meet more frequently, those other meetings are are pretty, pretty brief. And everybody else is in the same boat you are. Everybody, almost everybody is is working or has kid responsibilities or what have you. So the meeting schedule has to work around everybody else's schedule. And so by definition, that means they have to be flexible. So I I, you know, people who who work, I, you know, most of the time I've been on school board, I've had, I've worked. And and you just, you work it around your schedule, but it's important. It's it's, you are paid. It's it's not a lot. You're paid about a hundred and ten dollars a a a meeting. You earn approximately twenty four hundred dollars a a year. So you're you are compensated, it's clearly not very much, but but. It is, it is so important beyond the the money and the time commitment, we have got to make our presence felt.
And so just to give people an idea, would you say ten hours a week? Give me like, yeah, yeah, what do you, what do you think?
So I would, I would say a a good rule of thumb would be, you know, you know. Around ten hours a a week. Again, there, things come and go in cycles. There there may be, you know, several months in a row where you have. Just your your board meeting and maybe one other meeting and it's it's pretty de minimis. And other times when when you maybe during negotiations with the the unions, there that there is more frequent meeting. Because there's more, you know, more things to discuss. So I would say rule of thumb is ten, but know that it fluctuates.
And Annie asked a question, and I'm going to let you move on. Does the population of the city change the number of required signatures for your petition?
It it, there is some, there there is a difference. I I I have really tailored my presentation to those school districts. And again, we got six hundred in Ohio that are basically similar to mine, where they they have five school board members. There are other situations, maybe in in cities, large metropolitan areas where where the requirements are different. The number of school board members is different as well. Some school boards actually are now appointed by mayors and what have you. So there, what I'm talking about is going to apply to the vast majority of school districts in Ohio. But know that each school district can be a little different. And your board of election is a is typically a great source of information. My board of election has been very responsive, happy to answer questions. You may not always be so fortunate, but you can get a lot of good information and understanding from the board of election.
Good, good. So go to the board election for that. One last question. Tammy says, I'm confused where I serve. When I entered my address, the state has my district as one district. But my auditor lists my district differently. How do I find out? Do I just go to the board of elections?
Yeah, I I would recommend going to the board of elections. That that is a, that is very curious. I would, I I'm not, to be honest with you, I don't even know if I would have more confidence in your auditor or your board of elections. You you need, I would go to the board of elections, give them a call and ask them, talk about the discrepancy and and see if they have a way of solving it.
Thanks, I'll let you move on, Tom. Thanks.
Terrific. All right, so so another area to to talk about is social media, websites, you know, volunteers and and fundraising. Um, so I, 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 I probably am not a very typical candidate. I, I really am not a social media person. And although in my first campaign, I did have a website, uh, in my subsequent elections, I did not have a, a website. So I would, I would recommend if you are reasonably adept at, at social media, it is probably worth your idea to go ahead and, and set up a page. Um, there's, there's no cost, um, and it's easier to post events, have dialogue and to have people share your events to, to get the word out. The only caveat is if, if you really are in a, in a very competitive race and, and money's important, you may want to revisit that and have your own campaign website, uh, so that you can perhaps raise funds via that website. But make sure when you, if you were to do that, that you are collecting all the information that's required for campaign finance reporting. Um, there's a fair amount of information and, and it does get pretty detailed. They, they, the, the campaign finance people, you know, pretty much want to know where every, literally every dollar comes from. So, so just be aware of that. But it, more or less, social media is the, is the, uh, I would recommend, at least based on my experience over a campaign website. But again, uh, you may not need it at all. Uh, I, as I said, I, 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 I have the, a, a very bare minimum, minimum presence on social media. And I've never used it in a, in a, in a campaign. But I, I know many of you are on this call, probably are, are social media mavens. And that may be the, you know, one of your strongest suits. So definitely, you know, play to your strongest suit as, as you look at, at running for, for school board. The other, the other thing is, uh, developing a, a volunteer team. And, and I would say this, that if you can get some people together, whether it be friends, you know, family, neighbors, to help with campaigning, it really does make a difference. It, it helps, I think psychologically from a candidate perspective. It just helps to know that there are other sets of hands that are, that are willing to, to, to work with you and help you get across the line victoriously. Um, and, and so I, I do think that having a volunteer, uh, team or people that you can rely on going door-to-door and tubing and maybe attending parades and things like that really is important. Uh, if you can do it, but I'd also say it's, it's not a requirement. The first time I ran, um, I did have one lady who, who helped, helped me during the, the get out the vote effort. But, uh, but short of that, pretty much I, I just did my own thing. And, and I was successful. So there were, there are a lot of different ways to skin the cats. Everybody's situation is going to be different. I would recommend in general that if you can put volunteers together, if you use them effectively, it's going to be worth your time. But, but just remember, everything comes with a cost. So you really need to be in charge of your volunteers and, and have a, you know, a scope around, around their activities. And, and make sure that it's driving to a purpose. Uh, sometimes people get together and there's a lot of conversation or, or whatever. There's more chit chat about what's going on in the district rather than, than perhaps getting out there and, and, and getting word out about your candidacy. So the, the candidate really needs to drive the volunteer team. You need to be respectful. Obviously volunteer means you're not paying them. But, uh, and people can walk away, but you need to respect and work with them, but you've got to lead them and make sure that the, the efforts that they're doing are, are of benefit because nobody wants to waste their time. As, as far as fundraising goes, um, you know, I, again, I think many, many of you who, who throw your hat in the ring, you, you're probably going to be able to, to do well within the constraints of the local candidate waiver, which is again, two thousand dollars max expenditure plus the other couple of other requirements. Um, but if you're in a competitive race, and there are some, and it may be, you know, more in the suburbs, um, where you, you have a lot of people who are, are quote-unquote woke on, on a school board and maybe much of the population is not as woke. Um, there, there could be some competitive races. So you may want to consider fundraising. Um, you know, the first place to start really is with the candidates. So, so having some disposable money that you can apply to your, your candidacy is important. You need to, to show any, before you ask anybody else to, to contribute to your campaign, you need to, to pony up as well. And this is just common sense and I'm sure that didn't even really need to be said. But then, you know, where else do you go? You may can go to your, your volunteer, uh, teammates. Um, you may go to family members, neighbors, things like that. And if more money is, is still needed after that, because the, the campaign, the, the particular race is very competitive, then you're going to want to consider holding a fundraiser. That's beyond the scope of, of this. But as I'll mention towards the end, I am hoping or planning to host other meetings where, where details can be discussed. And in fact, I, I should mention that, that I, I have hopefully given you the basics in all this. But each individual area can, we certainly can go more in depth because there, there are more details and more, more information that might be useful. But hopefully this, this overall overarching presentation has a lot of good information and at least helps you understand what it takes to run an effective campaign. So you've gone through, you've, you've, you know, you've, you've filed, you've done your, your bio. You've answered the question why you want to run for office. You figured out who your, you know, which, who your voters are and how you want to reach out to them. Now you're getting towards the end, it's getting towards Election Day. You've been at this since August fourth and, and, and now you're basically in the home stretch. Well, what is the absentee chase? The absentee chase is where you try to reach out to and communicate with the absentee voter. As we all, if you've been paying attention at all, you, you know that, that more and more people are voting via absentee ballot. Well, in Ohio, fortunately, you actually have to submit a request form. The voter does have to submit a request form for the absentee ballot. So what the, what happens in, in many, again, Boards of Election, and I, I, I honestly don't know if, if my Board of Election, how unique it is. But as people send in their, their absentee ballot requests, my Board of Election will actually compile that and will develop a, a, a PDF list of those voters by subdivision, i.e. by school district in, in my case. And, and will allow for, it'll allow you to print out labels, basically. So they, they do a lot of the, the groundwork for you. You, you download it, you print labels, and what you do is you put a postcard together with all, again, the, the key information based on your bio and other experiences that you may have had along the way during the campaign. You put those key information, that are key information together. You then, um, mail, put a stamp on it, put the address on it, and you send it off. And the goal is to have the, the label, or excuse me, the, the postcard and the ballot arrive on the same day at the voter. So they, they get the, the ballot, they get information about you, and hopefully you influence them to vote for you. So that's the absentee chase. I, I, that is one of the more expensive aspects of campaigning because you, you typically have to buy a, a pre-made postcard, at least that's what I did. Um, you know, you've got to buy some labels, you've got to buy stamps, which is the most expensive. But by doing a postcard, you, you are spending less on postage than you would if you were sending a letter. So that's one way of, of saving money. And I still believe that you can get the information out in a, in an effective way so that, that, you know, voters get a, a, a clear understanding of who you are, what you stand for, and, and hopefully persuade them to, to vote for you. So that's, that's in a nutshell, that's the absentee chase. That happens once, uh, you know, absentee ballots, voting happens. So you're talking in the October timeframe in Ohio as, as current law exists. So the next, next stop on the train, and, and, and while you're doing the absentee chase, you're probably, you, you, if you can, you still want to do some door-to-door work as well. So, so you, some of these phases do overlap, but, but you, you definitely want to do your best to, to get information out there. Um, what do you do on Election Day? Well, that's clearly the, the last chance to, to influence the voters. So you, you want to take a look at the voting, the polling locations in your school district. You want to identify those that, that, uh, have the highest number of voters. Um, then you want to make sure that, if you can, you want to make sure as the candidate, that you are available all day. So if you are working, I would recommend that you, you take a day off of work. If, if you have that flexibility and campaign, if you do have a volunteer team, then you want to ask your volunteers to, to help, you know, pass out literature at the polling locations as well. Um, but you know, kind of, kind of a rule of thumb, if you don't have the, the manpower to cover all the polls all the time, again, you want to prioritize those that have the, the, the most voters. And then you want to also focus on the times during the voting day that are typically, um, you know, have the highest volume. And so my experience is basically from six-thirty to about eight-thirty or nine o'clock in the morning, you get the, the early morning rush, then people go to work. And then some people vote during lunch, more or less eleven to, to one PM. And then there's a lull again in the afternoon, and then there's a bit of a rush, uh, typically between four-thirty and probably six-thirty. My experience has been even in presidential elections that, that pretty much after six-forty-five or seven o'clock, that the, the volume's pretty low. But again, that's my experience, it may not be your experience. I, if I were in your shoes, you know, you never know if that last vote you get is going to be the, the one that puts you over to victory. So you don't want to necessarily, you know, you just, if you're going to run, you, you need to run. And, and my adage was that, that I will stay there until seven-thirty and pass out lit and try to get every last vote I can, just because you never know if that last vote is the one that, that allows you to have victory. So anyway, so that's, so we've covered, you know, pretty much all, all, all the basics, right? We've talked about, um, how to file. We've talked about putting together your bio. We've talked about how to identify, uh, voters and who you might want to, uh, focus your efforts on. We've talked about campaigning, going door-to-door. We've talked about, you know, online, social media, website, fundraising a little bit. We've talked about putting together a volunteer team. We've talked about the, the candidate, or excuse me, the absentee voter chase and, and how to do things on Election Day. So, so you're probably thinking, you know, Tom hasn't, you know, given me a lot of information, but, but really it, it's, it's not rocket science. And that's, that's true. It is truly, this is not rocket science. But like anything else, there are, you know, tricks of the trade, rules of thumb, there, there are still steps you have to take. So although I haven't, you know, I, I, I suspect I haven't blown anybody away with, with, uh, my insights, hopefully this gives you a good foundation of knowledge and understanding such that, that you can move forward with some confidence in, in becoming a, a candidate for school board. Um, I, I mentioned earlier that, that, you know, I, we are in the middle of American resurgence, right? And, and what do I mean by resurgency? Some of you may be old enough to remember when we had the Cold War and you, you may have heard in the news, there's a communist insurgency going on and what have you. We are a resurgent of American values. So, so this resurgency that I'm talking about is making sure that America stays America and that we are stepping up and doing what we need to do in order to, to preserve the America that, that was founded by our founders. So in the name of self-governance and restoring the republic, we need to, to step up and do that. Um, one thing that's interest, you know, different this time, um, I, you know, when I first ran in two thousand and eleven was, uh, I, I took office in, in January of, of two thousand and twelve. Um, I had just moved back to the district. I grew up here, I had moved away for a number of years and moved back. And, and I hadn't given any thought to running to office, but somebody had asked me if I would. And initially I said no, but then ultimately I said yes. And at that point, there was some, some chaos going on in the district regarding finances. And, and I was fortunate enough to A, be elected and B, when I was elected, was able to help bring the board and the administration together to focus on addressing those, those financial issues and to earn, re-earn the confidence, um, of, of the voting public so that we were able to move forward in a more effective way. Obviously, that was a, a few years ago. Things are different today, there are different issues that we are confronting. But, but now is the time to run. Now is the time to, to figure things out and to put, you know, to put your hat in the ring and see what happens.
Hey Tom, we've got plenty of questions. Can I start firing them at you?
You surely may.
Okay. So Paul wanted to make a point, um, that he needed seventy-five, um, seventy-five for a town of twenty thousand. So, um, thank you for that, Paul. And, um, I had an anonymous attendee ask the question, ten hours a week, two hours per workday. What kind of things are typically involved in that ten hours? So you said about, you talked about the two, two meetings. I mean, like how much time do you have to spend like answering emails?
Yeah. So I, I must have misspoke. I, I meant it was, it's ten, ten hours a month.
Ten hours a month?
Yeah. Yeah, it is a huge difference. So I apologize if I, I misspoke earlier, but it's basically ten hours a month. And then it, it, you know, again, it, it fluctuates based on the circumstances.
Um, so Becky asked a question. Does it matter how much of my own money that I spend on my campaign? Do I have to keep track of how much of my own money I spend and report it?
Yes. Every, every dollar that's spent, whether you're self-funded or you're getting donations, needs to be tracked and, and, and accounted for. So, so the answer is every, every, every influx of money and every expenditure needs to be fully documented.
And, um, Ted asked a question. How many people typically run for a board position? So let's say there are three open. What's your experience tell you how many people actually run?
So, you know, my, my experience obviously is, is mostly based on my, uh, my school district and, and other districts in my county, of which there are a total of nine. I frankly, I'm not aware of there ever being a, a seat that's available that nobody ran for. So at least typically, you'll, you'll at least have the minimum number of candidates for the seats that are available. Um, and, and sometimes you only get that. Every time that I've run, I've had more people running than, than, uh, seats available. So, you know, there's been more competition during the cycles that I've run. But, uh, you know, the first time I ran, there were eight people. The last two times I've, I've run, there were a total of three people for two positions. And I, my cycle is I run when the two positions on the school board are up.
Thank you. Kelly asked a question. If three candidates run together, do you suggest that they use one treasurer or use three different treasurers so they can accept two thousand dollars each and still run together?
So I, I, I have very little experience in this realm of, of candidacy, candidates filing together and running as a team. I, I did, when I, earlier on and during my, my tenure on school board, the, uh, the cycle that where the three seats are up, the, the first time that those board members, uh, ran, they did run as a team. Um, so I, 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 I don't know that I have a whole lot of insight. I would say this, um, and, but, you know, the, if I had any advice, I don't necessarily have any advice. I can't answer the question about the, you know, the treasurer and things like that. I, I would say, you know, as a rule of thumb, the less complicated you can have things, the better off everybody's going to be. So if you can get away with one treasurer, that probably makes sense. Just make sure everybody trusts them. The other thing I would say that is when you're running as a team, make sure you really know the, the other people that you're teaming with. You know, if, if you were running along and everything is great and you're all strong candidates, you can help each other get across the line. But, but be clear, if you're in a, in a competitive race, that people are going to do research on you. And if there is anything that, that people can make a, you know, a, a past, a, you know, put a, a, a dark cloud over one of the candidates, if you're running as a team, that dark cloud goes over everybody.
So our friend, our friend Bill added the comment, I was treasurer for a school board campaign and it's not difficult with the small numbers that are involved in these school board offices. The Board of Elections is very helpful with questions. Couple more questions. Can a school board member ask to be involved in the interviews for principals?
Um, that, that's pretty rare. Um, I, I, I'm, I'm thinking, we've had very few, uh, people turn over, they're, they're, I, so let me, let me backtrack. So there are some certain, you know, if, if a curriculum, um, director, um, a, an assistant superintendent, uh, principals. So some, there are some areas where, where everybody needs to have firsthand experience. Everybody on the board needs to have firsthand experience with that potential candidates to make sure they're comfortable with them. So there are, there are instances where, where the administration has done all the screening, they've come up with a final candidate or two and, and the, the, the board is brought in to, to have, uh, a chance to, to talk with that candidate or last two candidates to make sure they're comfortable with that. So that, that does happen.
So, um, I, I'm new to this, but I understand when a person is elected to school board. I hope a lot of you will be, that you're kind of indoctrinated by something called the Ohio's, uh, School Board Association. And I'm hearing this is kind of a, you know, tells you what you can, what you can't do. Do you think school board members that are elected need new and better and different coaches when they become school board members?
I, you know, I, I do believe that, that would be helpful. There, there is some useful information from Ohio School Boards Association. But I, you know, I, I, I've, I've actually had the minimalist contact with OBA, OBE, let's see, Ohio School Board, OSBA. Um, even when I was elected, uh, the first time, I did not go to any of their training, um, and what have you. And I was able to figure out how things run. And, and frankly, this time, and let me, let me make a plug. I, there, there are more resources for people running for school board now than there happened in the past, right? Uh, I, I had alluded to that I, I'm hoping to have and planning to have, uh, meetings with, with candidates, uh, if, if they choose to. Um, but if you are interested in potentially having regular conversations where, where it can be specific topics or open forum where questions can be asked and, and hopefully answers generated, please email me at freeohiano@eagolfiremail.com. Again, eagle fire, excuse me, freeohiano@eagolfiremail.com. Let's get on the list, let's be in contact. Let's get on the list. Let's be in contact so that, that we can work together. Additionally, Freedom Works is, is doing some work as well and we'll be able to get that information out to people. And I know other people within Ohio are going to be helping candidates as well. All, everybody is doing yeoman's work. And, and so if you, you know, you, you like this presentation, but you meet somebody else and you, you think they, another person or another environment has more information for you, you should go where the information is best and that can help you to campaign the most. But we're all in this together. Go ahead.
I think it's safe to say, Tom, I don't know if you feel this way, that there's, there's so much of a groundswell of support for new school board members that when, when new school board members are elected, there's going to be a whole team of, of people looking to help you and, and, and looking to help make you successful. Um, and so I just want to direct everyone to Tom's email address, which will be on the Empower You site. And Tom Hock, I, I really appreciate you joining Empower You tonight and, uh, sharing everything with us. And remember, for any of you who missed anything, I know there was a kind of a complicated finance question. I'm sorry we couldn't get to, um, about money, uh, but, uh, you can go back and watch this class tomorrow. And, uh, any parting words for us, Tom? Go get them.
Yeah, absolutely. Go get them. And, and, and now's the time to stand up. If, we, we are, we are surging forward and it is time to step up and reassert our, our role in self-governance and part of self-governance is running for office. So, so please, if you're on the fence, use this as the, as the thing that puts you over to run and move forward.
Tom Hock, thank you very much for joining Empower You tonight. Have a good rest of your night. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Well, uh, that was Power Pack. We tried to get, we got a lot of questions in. Sorry, we didn't get to them all, but, um, like I said, you can, uh, always email Tom. I had an opportunity to listen to Chris Hicks make a very, um, interesting presentation to the Ohio School Board earlier this month. Chris is an outspoken government ethics and integrity activist from Claremont County. He is an independent business consultant who's worked with companies like Samsung, Dell, IBM and, and SAP on sales channel growth in over fifty countries. He's a big MAGA supporter and, uh, he's worked with something to, that he's created called Contract with the District, which is a tool to better understand local school board candidates' positions on key issues. Chris is active in Claremont County politics. He's prevailed in a lot of legal cases where he has fought corruption, which is so important. And he's been involved in convictions of several elected officials. And, and one thing I want to say about that, all you who watched the first part, two things. Whatever you do on the petition signing, don't cut corners. Don't, don't sign and say that you, you don't, if you didn't see the person sign it, don't sign the affidavit that says you saw him because you're opening yourself up for, 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 for trouble. But Chris has got his Hicks Watchdog Facebook page and he's a well-known source of information on politics. So Chris Hicks, welcome to Empower You. It's good to have you.
Thank you, Dan. I appreciate it. I'm going to share a screen because I put together a couple of quick things here and I'm going to try to go really fast. Let me know that it's working okay.
Yeah, you're good.
Okay. So what, so, because we have Brendan Shea who's patiently waiting, who's a member of the State Board of Education. And I think we'll all want to really hear from him about how important it is for local school boards. So I'm going to talk about Contract with the District very quickly. So Contract with the District is the, is giving you a tool to go drive accountability of your existing school board members and other people that are running for school board or want to run for school board. So it's a ten-point contract, think a Newt Gingrich contract with America, that it focuses on four things that a school board member or candidate will say that they're going to support and fight for and six things that they say they're going to fight against. I'm not going to go, I'm not even going to read off all the points here. I'm going to tell you how to get to this and how to learn more about it. But for example, the things for support, support and fight for are things like academic excellence being the number one measurement, keeping accelerated programs, fair and balanced presentation of American history, parents write the no before their kids get any counseling or treatments, uh, et cetera, financial integrity. The opposer against are things that you would, would think would be in a conservative leaning contract like this. Critical race theory, sixteen nineteen project, comprehensive sexuality education, those kinds of things. So the contract is a way for you to go to a school board meeting or find a candidate and say, hey, here's ten points. Go to public participation at a school board meeting. Read the ten points, ask the school board members to sign off that they agree. And because they're politicians, even if they're just school board members, there's actually two versions. There's a version that I had up on the screen that was, I agree with everything. There's another version where they can actually indicate what things out of the ten they agree with and what they don't. And they can provide additional information. I actually know a school board member who's very conservative, but he's not going to check all ten things because there's one that he doesn't like the wording of. So he can check nine of them and he can then provide some additional explanation. So this document is called the Contract with the District and it's a tool that we really need to use to get these people to be on the record and accountable. These school board races are under the radar and most people don't even know who's on their school board. Most people haven't been to a school board meeting. And although Tom Hack, who did an excellent job, pointed out that this is kind of the entry point for most people into the political world. There is not a single elected office that is more important on the local level than school board because it is determining how kids, the next generation of Americans are being educated. And so that, so I can't emphasize enough how important school boards are and how important it is for you to step one, get your existing school board members to be accountable and step two, to run if, if they are not or find people. Now, I did a thing, uh, two days ago with Chris Dore of Ohio Gun Owners, where we spent over an hour going through each of the ten points of the contract in pretty good detail, talking about them. And I put, I know you might not be able to see this, but you're about to see it in the replay. There's the link to it, but it's on the Ohio Gun Owners webpage. And obviously those of you that know Chris Dore, he's very, it's the Second Amendment group, but they're realizing our constitutional rights are at risk if our kids are not getting good education in schools and true education in schools. So we spent a lot of time talking about it. And then as Dan mentioned, I talked, spoke about it in some depth at the state's, state board of education, last state board of education meeting. And what was five minutes of participation ends up to be about thirty-five minutes of questions about it. So it's very, I think it's, uh, most people that have watched, I think it's entertaining to watch and to see how different school board members react to this idea of accountability. And the fun part too, Dan, I know you'd appreciate this, is I go out of my way to avoid saying the banned words at the state school, as board of education. You are not allowed to say, and what's totally on the front of the constitution, you are not allowed to say critical race theory or sixteen nineteen project while presenting at the state board of education. And could think about that. If you believe in liberal education and that's what a state board of education should stand for, it's obscene that they will not allow certain words to be said. So the last thing, there's the, the contract, I know Dan's got it hosted or is having it hosted with this. There's a couple of other places to get the contract. And then I put down my email down at the very bottom of this, chris@hicksprince.com, chris@h i c k s p r i e n c e dot com. But you can also go to hickswatchdog.com, which will take you to my Facebook page and you can message me there or you can, uh, see my email address there. So I tried to go super fast, Dan, because I want to make sure that Brendan Shea gets a chance to talk and give an update about the state board of education. So thank you for having me on tonight.
Yeah. And Chris, one thing, would you send me that link to that interview you did, please? I'll put that up on the empoweryouOhio.org website. I also just wanted, I just want to throw out that Chris's ten ideas are, are ideas you all should be thinking about if you're thinking about running, incorporating some of them into your, in your platform. So I want you to at least drill down and look at, at, at the document he's designed. You can get that off empoweryouOhio.org or on the other, uh, sites that Chris mentioned, Chris Hicks.
It, it, Dan, real quick, I think it does a good job at laying out the ten critical points that are really the fulcrum upon which our educational system is sitting right now. So I, I think you're spot on that people could look at this for ideas for a platform.
It's amazing, it's amazing to me, Chris, that at a time when our legislature is looking at legislation on critical race theory, that the Ohio State School Board will not accept any testimony on, um, on the exact same thing. I, I need everybody to think about that. That's the state you're living in. I'm so thrilled to have Brendan Shea here tonight, Chris. Thanks. Uh, he was elected to the state board of education. We haven't met yet and he's elected by the tenth district, um, which is a big district. I, I don't know how you do it. Adams County, Brown County, Clark County, Claremont County, Clinton County, Fayette, Gallya, Green, Highland, Jackson, Lawrence, Madison, Pike, Ross, Scioto and the western portions of Pickway and Benton. That's, that's a huge area. And, um, Brendan is, he's, he's from a large family of educators and believes deeply in the life-changing power of education. We're all finding out how important that is. As a father of five young children, he knows the unique challenges families face. And we wanted to give Brendan just a couple of minutes to say hello and introduce himself and share whatever's on your mind, Brendan. Welcome.
Well, great. Thank you so much, Dan. Thank you for all you're doing. I've recently, believe it or not, learned about Empower You and it's inspiring. Uh, thank you to Tom and, and Chris. Great to follow you. My understanding is that my colleague, Kirsten Hill, talked about critical race theory a couple of months ago. Uh, Dan mentioned that was a, a well-attended and a, and a great presentation. So I'm not going to talk too much about it, but what you need to know as far as the bad news, I'm sure Kirsten shared a lot of that. But what, it's, it's in a nutshell, you could say that it's the fact that in the strategic plan and in the resolution that you may be starting to hear a lot about that was passed last July by the Board of Education, the state board, it, it enshrines this idea that equity, it says, is the greatest imperative and number one principle. So equity as the greatest imperative and number one principle. Dan referenced the term equity before, so I imagine many on this call are familiar with what that refers to. Uh, but equity is this idea that we're after equal outcomes. Equality refers to equal opportunity. And I would submit that those two things are mutually exclusive. If you have equal outcomes, by definition, you're not going to have equal opportunity and vice versa. So we're in the very dire situation where the state board has declared for itself and for the Ohio Department of Education that its number one priority is not academic excellence, right? Not even some subsets of that. It's equal outcomes. That is its reason for being at this point. And if you listen to meetings, uh, if you follow what the board is doing, it truly does flow. Everything is through what they call that equity lens. Whether it's commenting on legislation that's being considered, everything is through that lens. Want to mention two other things, which I, I've taken to calling an unholy trinity. And in Chris's points, uh, they're reflected there as well. CSE, comprehensive sexuality education. Uh, we're in a time when, uh, folks like Planned Parenthood are brought in to teach young people age inappropriate things. Transgender literature is pandered to first graders. We had a testimony at the state board, uh, a month ago from a mom whose minor daughter was referred behind her back to a mental health professional who referred her to a sex clinic for a sex change. And she underwent that process or initiated the process behind her parents' back without her even knowing. That's the rotten fruit of CSE, comprehensive sexuality education. And then there's SCL, social and emotional learning. It sounds good. Uh, we care about people's social and emotional health, but it's often the state or the school attempting to replace mom and dad. And, and we know that that can, that can never effectively happen. Uh, I actually commented on our, at our board meeting last month, at the stark, uh, the jarring, graphic that they're using for the social emotional learning. They have the child at the middle and then all sorts of other special interests, the school and everything else. And then on the far outside, there's a loop. There's a circle that has family. And I commented on that. I said, do you realize how jarring that is to see the separation? And it's just a graphic, but nevertheless, it's, it speaks to us. That's why we have graphics, that you've got the, the family on the outer ring. And they said, well, the color of the outer ring matches the, the color of the, the child. So it's, give me a break. And so much of what we're seeing shows just that, a separation. So that's the problem. I, I'd be happy to come back, you know, if there's any interest in talking about some of these other topics or anything else to go more in depth. The good news is we are technically still a local controlled state. The Biden administration is trying to change that. They're trying to effectually tie federal money to acceptance of some of these harmful ideologies. Uh, you know, so I could talk more about that. So they're trying to force the hand, but right now there is no state curriculum. And that is a common misconception. There are state standards, but there is no state curriculum. So I see no reason why every single school district in Ohio shouldn't have a resolution condemning these things, saying, we're not going to have it here. But actually you need to go further because I often see people will ask superintendents, can you tell me, do you support uh, critical race theory? Is, is it here? And they'll say, absolutely not. It's not here. It's not here. Move, move along, move along. That is the only unacceptable response to that question because it is there. It's everywhere. It has seeped into every inch of society. Our teacher training programs are saturated. Our, our future teachers and current teachers are saturated in this way of thinking. So in every district, it might not be as overt as, um, you know, having these shaming programs and these types of overt training, but it's there. And so the response you're looking for is I see the harm. I'm opposed to these things. I will do everything to make sure that where it is there, if it's finding its way into curriculum, we get it out, that we audit our, our history curriculum to make sure that you don't have a teacher going down and pulling off the Ohio Department of Education's website, the sixteen nineteen project, which teaches these things. It's on the ODE's website. So why would you think it hasn't made its way into kids' classrooms? We know it has. We know it has. And so I, I guess I'll close, Dan, by just saying, um, this is not the time to be overly cautious. I think the, the house is on fire. I think bringing these things to light, asking people questions and recognizing, as Tom mentioned, that these people are professionals. They do this for a living and you don't. So they're going to talk circles around you. They have smoke screens. It's very, very disorienting. You have to know that. I'm not saying you call them liars, but I am saying you can't take everything at face value initially. You have to drill down.
Brendan, thank you so much for joining Empower You. You're a breath of fresh air. We will definitely have you back. And I've never seen a correlation so clear in my mind as the correlation between the resolution passed by the state school board in July of last year to Mike DeWine becoming fully on board with equity, to seeing equity mentioned as every other word on the state school board, uh, website. So thank you so much for joining us tonight and for, uh, sharing your words and we'll definitely get you back in the fall. We really, really appreciate it.
Thank you, Dan. My pleasure.
Have a great night. So listen, I want to announce the winners of the three prizes tonight. Elizabeth M., congratulations. Be sure to get Mark Levin's book when it comes out in ten days. Kelly P., congratulations. You've won the flag painted frame for July fourth. And Robert T., you're the big winner of the twelve pack of Pepsi. So, uh, and stay cool with that, uh, Robert. I, I know you will. So listen, I don't, uh, I've got an empowered citizen award, which I think is pretty cool. I want to, I want to share with you. I don't know how many of you had a chance to see this, but this is thanks to Rick McCray from the Journal News, uh, for this, this story. And, um, so about two weeks ago, when the volleyball, uh, landed in the net and fell to the court on June seventh, Bishop Fenwick High School's boys volleyball team and head coach Pete Ehrlich won their second state championship. Before the season started, Ehrlich was fifty-eight, was diagnosed with a terrible disease, ALS or Lou Gehrig's disease. And he considered stepping away from the game he loved that he'd coached at Christian Hills Academy and also Bishop Fenwick. His ALS had progressed and he wasn't sure he could just, he could, he could continue. But those closest to him, his wife and family and his Fenwick family convinced him. And, uh, they won the Division Two Ohio Boys Volleyball, uh, title. Bishop Fenwick students yelled in the crowd, play, we're going to play for Pete. They defeated Olin Tangi and, uh, throughout the game, fans chant, play for Pete, play for Pete. The win really served as a testament to Ehrlich and his family. He, he, he recently had passed two years since he had been diagnosed and he didn't know anything about the disease or where it would lead to. The, the athletic director at Fenwick said, he, he has the best attitude towards everything. He has a great spirit. He takes every day like it would be his last. He brings faith into coaching. Coaching is the easy part. Uh, she said, being a great human being is what separates Ehrlich from others. The valedictorian at school, Will Richards, who was on the team, said, winning, uh, winning was huge for us, but winning was more than the game. Coach Pete instilled in his moral and faith lessons. Coach Pete knows this ALS is temporary and, and he knows it's heaven that's really in front of him. One thing's for sure, Coach Pete, uh, prefers to live life to the fullest. And no matter what adversity you have, no matter how hard life is, Coach Pete says God is good. And I think there will be plenty of tears when ALS finally beats Coach Pete, but, uh, because after all, the disease, it's undefeated. Coach Pete, I, I, I just want you to enjoy your great win and thank you for reminding us tonight what it means to be an empowered citizen. And everyone out there tonight, thanks so much for joining us. And everyone out there tonight, thanks so much for joining us. I really want you to think about taking this challenge. I want I want I want to ask you to to go out and empower you. Enjoy the summer. Take advantage of the blessings that God has given you and go out and empower you.